The recorder that we have in the, in the office here rather than on Zoom.
Okay.
But it is.
Any reason why we can't record on Zoom?
I don't want, want the, uh, uh, the amount of space, to be completely frank, on our account is small.
Ah, okay.
So I'm using the recorder that we have in the office.
Okay.
Okay, so we will.
Please, please continue, Ms. Herman. You are introducing your team members.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think that's everybody that we know. We look forward to meeting your council.
Okay, so I'm Susan Fattig. I'm the acting chair of the council for this meeting.
Should you move the camera around?
There we go. Yep, we got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're sharing a computer too.
Yeah.
Arthur?
Go ahead.
Somebody?
I'm Todd Mann, council member. Nice to meet you.
Yeah?
Arthur Alexander, council member.
Nice to meet you.
Katia Hill, uh, council member. I'm sorry, I'm on vacation, so I'm not really in a presentable space, but... So I'll turn off my camera.
Hi folks, this is Jeff Lander, also council member.
All right. And then Doug, do you just want to say hi just so that people?
Yes, this is Doug Lomar, building manager for the village.
All right. And then I'm the village manager, Niles Andre, and then we have Ron Bolt, who's on the call as well. Okay. With that, um, the next procedural thing is for Ron to explain, to go over sort of the, the procedure for this evening.
Sure. So this is a variance hearing, and the hearing is being recorded, and this is the first time we're doing this remotely, so everyone please bear with us. Please wait until you are recognized by the chair of the meeting, Ms. Fattig, so that we can make sure only one person is speaking at a time. The hearing will begin with presentation of the staff report by Mr. Lomar. That's a presentation of the facts and circumstances in the application. It's not a recommendation one way or the other, just so everyone is aware of that. Next, we'll move to the presentation of the request by the applicant. The applicant and their team members are free to present what information they feel pertinent. Please note that the council members have had the opportunity to review the application in advance, so don't feel like you have to cover everything that's in the application, but please feel free to address what you'd like. Next, we'll have an opportunity for the council members to ask questions of the applicant and team members. Next, if there's anyone else joining us who would like to ask questions of the applicant or make a comment and support our opposition, we'll have an opportunity for that. Then, the applicant will have a brief rebuttal, period. Then, the record will close. The council members will deliberate and entertain a motion to direct me to prepare a written decision, either approving or denying the request. And please note that that decision is not final until it's reduced to writing and issued by the chair. So if you do get approved, please note that the permit and work can't begin until that decision has been finalized. So with that, we'll go on to the presentation of the staff report by Mr. Lomar.
Uh, good evening. Just for orientation purposes, the property is located at the northwest corner of Summit Avenue and Taylor Mae. Now, Summit Avenue runs north and south, and Taylor Street runs east and west. The applicant proposes to add four additions to the existing house. The existing house is considered and allowed non-conforming use. However, all the conditions, all additions to the existing house must comply with the current village code. The village code requires that all additions to an existing house must meet the village's established building line or the EBL requirement. EBL analysis is the average of existing house setbacks made from the front of the house, the front property line, a distance of 300 feet on each side of the subject property. There are sections such as the analysis stops, the intersection of Taylor Street and Chestnut Street. Since 1700 Summit Avenue is a corner lot, the front is along Summit Avenue, and along Taylor Street are both considered front yards, and the EBL requirement must be applied to both front yards. The site plan indicates that the EBL runs through the existing house. The location of the existing house also dictates the rear and side yards. The code requires that a minimum of a 20-foot rear yard setback and a minimum of an eight-foot side yard setback. Since existing house is set back 20.3 feet on the northern property line, the northern side of the lot is considered the rear yard. The side yard to the west of the house, since the house is located 7.7 feet from the property line, will be the side yard. In order to construct the proposed bay window and a one-foot enclosed addition to the foyer, a variance from Summit Avenue and Taylor Street is required. And now I'll begin with the first, uh, group of variances for the bay window. The applicant proposes to add a bay window to the front of the house along Summit Avenue. According to the EBL analysis provided by the applicant, the EBL along Summit Avenue is 30.3 feet behind the front property line. The village code allows a bay window to project into a front yard setback a maximal of 2.5 feet. Thus, the bay window cannot be located closer than 27.8 feet behind the front property line along Summit Avenue. The site plan indicates that the bay window be located 25.4 feet behind the front property line. In order to construct the bay window, a variance is required along Summit Avenue. And continuing discussion on the bay window, the EBL along Taylor Street is 42.9 feet behind Taylor Street front property line. Again, the bay window may project a maximum of 2 points feet in the EBL. Thus, the bay window cannot be located in, closer than 40.4 feet behind the front property line along Taylor. The applicant's site plan for the bay window is located 31.1 feet behind the front property line on Taylor Street. In order to construct the proposed bay window, a variance of 2.4 feet from Summit Avenue is required, and a variance of 9.3 feet is required along Taylor Street. Uh, and that concludes my report for the bay window.
Yeah. So, um, do we want to, uh, Ron, so this is where we're going to sort of go through the discussion of that, just that portion, and then continue on with, with the next portion? Do you see what I'm saying, Ron?
Yes, yeah, I, I see what you're saying. That's up to the, the council, how the council would like to proceed.
I would like to hear all, all of it thrown in together, rather than one by one.
Agreed.
Probably more efficient that way.
Okay. Then continue, Doug.
Then I'll be, excuse me, go ahead.
Then continue, Doug.
Okay. Uh, the front, uh, foyer extension. The applicant plan proposes to add a one-foot deep enclosed addition to the existing house foyer facing Summit Avenue. Proposed one-foot enclosure, enclosed addition is considered an addition in the building code. The code does not allow a, a building to encroach into the established building line along Summit or Taylor Street. The EBL along Summit Avenue is 30.3 feet, feet, 30.3 feet. The applicant's plan indicates the foyer will be located 29.5 feet behind the front property line along Summit. The EBL also shows that, that the, the EBL is also located 42.9 feet behind the front property line along Taylor. The applicant's plan indicates the foyer will be located 42.6 feet behind the front property line along Taylor. In order to construct the proposed enclosed foyer, a variance of 0.8 feet is required from Taylor, from Summit Avenue, and a variance of 0.3 feet is required along Taylor Street. The next part is the front porch and steps. The applicant proposes to add a porch with three steps in front of the existing house along Summit Avenue. The village code allows a porch, including the steps, to project into the EBL a maximum total of nine feet. The EBL along Summit Avenue is 30.3 feet. Thus, the porch and steps cannot be located closer than 21.3 feet behind the front property line along Summit. The applicant's plan indicates the step will be located 17.5 feet behind the front property line. In order to construct the proposed porch and steps, a 3.8-foot variance is required along Summit. No variance is required along Taylor because the porch does not encroach beyond nine feet into the EBL setback. The next section would be the covered porch on the north side, which does not require a variance, but it is included into the building cap calculations in accordance with the village code. The setbacks for the porch do meet the required setbacks for a, the, uh, side and rear along the house. Last item would be the building coverage. The village code defines building coverage as the area of the lot that is occupied by the main and accessory buildings, including bay windows, porches, and steps. According to the code, the maximum building coverage allowed is 2, 2,163 square feet, or 28.38%. The applicant's site plan indicates the building coverage as defined by the code would be 2,350 square feet, or 30.83%. A variance, if you approve all of the other, the four variances, then a variance will be required for the building coverage. And that concludes my report.
Good to you. And before we move on to the applicant's case, I would just note that there has been five letters submitted that are included in the variance package from neighbors, either indicating, uh, support or the absence of any objection. And then another letter came in recently from Mr. Bowers, I believe, and Niles sent that around to the council members by email. And that would be the, the sixth letter. So the council is free to ask any questions of Mr. Lomar, or we can move on to the applicant's case, if there are no questions from the council. I have no question. All right, hearing no questions. Yep, the Hermans can, can present and their team.
Thank you. Um, we sincerely appreciate, um, this process and the support we've gotten from Niles and, and understanding, and also our interactions with Doug on this, back and forth, including meeting with him and, uh, talking on the phone several times. We have lived at our home since 2005. Our kids have grown up here, and we're surrounded by terrific neighbors who are joining us tonight, and all the neighbors in, in uh, the Village of Martins Additions. I think we've all seen, um, that magnified during this COVID period, when we're all outside, talking with, with each other, and, uh, sharing conversations on our terrific listserv. Our proposal is aimed at enhancing our home and thereby the neighborhood, and we've just reviewed the components of, of our proposal. I want to comment that, um, the bay window would share a roof line with the extended front stoop and the adjoining foyer, which is why we're asking for that one-footed uh, addition to our foyer and the steps, uh, and the porch and the steps. It'll all connect under one roof. And, um, it's all about just, um, bringing some, a bit of additional space. We believe it's a minimal request, and more sunlight to enjoy. We appreciate that each of our neighbors who we contacted about our proposal, and we provided them extensive plans, and an outline of, um, all the materials that we submitted to the council, readily agreed that, um, they supported our proposal, and, um, and we thank them for that. And I'll turn it over to Andrew and outline a couple of other things.
Hi, again, Doug, to the council and neighbors, thank you very much for your, your time. This has been an interesting process, and I, I really want to thank, it's been collaborative working with Doug, with the village attorney, with Niles and his team, because we've really learned from this process a lot about the village rules. We've always appreciated living in, in Martins Additions, but for the first time really studying what these rules mean. And one of the things that Amy mentioned, you know, when we look first at a bay window is through really our architect, our builder, about creating symmetry in lines to keep the look of our house, which is why I, we thought about pushing out the foyer and changing the front stoop, because you could ask, what's a one-foot addition? It's really, to put a bay window on by itself, we think would not look as aesthetically similar as if we did this full addition. So I think if you look at the drawings, it's all an attempt to keep the look of our current house. The, the other thing that we learned, you know, there are these words when we build out the application, is what's our peculiar practical difficulty? Why are we making this request? We assumed, um, perhaps naively or innocently, that when we thought about an addition, that we would look at our existing perimeter of our house, and we would say, well, we're gonna, we're really not looking to do something large. It's not a nine-foot addition, as you, you heard, but in fact, you're from the outside perimeter, it's two and a half, three feet. But the EBL, the, the existing building line, which, um, Doug mentioned, actually sits inside of our house. So when our house was built around 2001, it was properly, it was permitted. It was all done permitted through Montgomery County and the village rules at the time. What we learned through surveying, and we had to not just survey our house, but we had to look at the building lines down both Summit and Taylor Streets, is that our EBL actually sits inside of our house, which in large part is why you're hearing some of these measurements, saying, well, it's, it's nine feet, as opposed to, you know, if you look from a building standpoint, and you say, if you took a snapshot of our house today, and you took, and you approve it, and, you know, we certainly would encourage and hope the council will approve what we're requesting, and you look at it immediately afterwards, you're not going to see any nine-foot extension. You're going to see a, you know, a, a bay window of a couple of feet, and you're going to see that one-foot foyer extension. But the measurements, which we respect, are off of the village rules, which say you measure from the EBL, which in our case sits inside of our house as opposed to on the building perimeter. So that's our peculiar practical difficulty, um, which is what's complicated this, because the measurements are what they are, and we have to show you what the full extent of it is. But again, through, through the help of both Jerry and Michael about the aesthetics, the architecture, as well as working with, um, the village, um, the actual impact, we believe, is fairly minimal. And we've showed the drawings to our neighbors who are, who are supportive, um, and, um, that, that includes everybody who's either is looking at our house, or if you're on the, the perimeter surrounding our house. So we're very, we're, we're hopeful and, um, would encourage it to grant the variance, um, within, um, you know, looking at what the overall, you know, changes to our house, and, and look at the actual building lines, which we understand, you also, you know, means you have to grant this variance to the actual rules, but the impact in the, well, is minimal, and the overall aesthetic, we think, will be an enhancement to what we believe is a wonderful corner. We love this corner. Uh, we see lots of our neighbors walking their dog. So we're a very popular corner, particularly in the last four or five months.
On the way to the market.
On the way to the market. You know, part of the reason that we want the extended, you know, porches, we're happy, is we want to sit outside more. Uh, we want to sit outside and be able to say hello to more neighbors, and, um, that will allow us to do that. I'd like to spend, I know we don't have a lot of time, I'd like to turn it over, um, to Jerry and, and to Michael, next, in our remaining time.
Hey, Andrew. Uh, my name is Jerry Yantis. I'm principal with Sutton Yantis Associates Architects. And I've been working with Amy and Andrew on this proposed, these proposed additions. And we certainly have a very unusual case. Um, is my understanding that I could share a screen?
Yes. So if you go ahead on the bottom, where it said, where it should be like a green button that says share a screen, that should allow you to share it. I've already set the rules to allow you to. There we go. Then it should, if you can pick what.
Just kind of walk you through, obviously, there's a lot of, uh, variances we are requesting. See that?
Yep.
Okay. Um, thank you to all the council members and everybody attending the meeting. Appreciate everybody's time. Obviously, these variances are always a little intricate, and there's, this one certainly is, uh, I got a lot of that involved. But hopefully, we can walk through this fairly simply, and, um, hopefully, it makes sense, and, um, hopefully, we're, look at the, to gain your approval. Um, what's very unusual about this property is when it was built, um, although there were no requirements by the village in terms of setbacks, Montgomery County did have at the time established building restriction lines. And it should have conformed, uh, to those. And in our research, um, we found, obviously, that, um, it did not. And in fact, the established building line is significantly running through the house on the Taylor Street side, and, and then somewhat along the summit as, as well. So something happened there, um, but it was certainly missed from a zoning aspect, and thus creates a very unusual condition for the Hermans at this point. It, it's, uh, it's effectively, what we're asking for are fairly simple things that most property owners would be able to, uh, enjoy and add to their homes without a variance. But because of this unusual condition with the established building line, it's creating a need for the variances. If you would indulge me for a minute, and I know this wasn't a piece that we submitted to the council to look at, but, um, what I did here was, you can see the red line, it would be effectively the closest, uh, parallel line to the property line, so effectively a setback that if, if there was a line, it's like, okay, now the house is all within that, behind that setback, that would be the location. You can see it's basically touching at this point. And if that was the case, and if, and this house was legal, you know, legally built to that line, then all of these additions here, the, the bay window, the porch, and the one-foot extension would not require a variance. So it's, it's quite unusual, um, but we're, we're asking for things that can encroach typically, a bay window, a porch with steps. And so it's, uh, we feel like we're, you know, we're not asking for a 10-by-10 addition that normally would not be allowed to encroach and so forth. So we feel it's certainly in keeping with the spirit of the regulations, um, of the village and so forth. It just so happens we have a very unusual, um, situation that the house is, uh, well over, uh, the established building line here. You know, most other property owners would be able to enjoy the, the ability to add these additions, and unfortunately, the Hermans are not. The, um, the, the porch, the covered porch at the rear, as has been stated, is certainly within the setbacks there. It's just as we go through all these, um, uh, these additions, we end up, um, about 180-some feet, uh, over the, um, building lot coverage. So that's kind of the final variance that we're, we're looking at. In terms of the, the aesthetics and the architecture of what this will look like, in terms of the floor plan, this will kind of give you a little bit of an idea. So this is the front of the house along here, the garage, and the rest of the front of the house for the porch. So the bay window is bay window off of the existing living room. The one-foot addition is here in the foyer, um, and this allows, uh, these walls to align here. And then the porch itself, uh, the character of the porch, um, is really in keeping with the existing porch. It has, um, round columns and, and a metal roof. We're simply just, uh, enhancing that a little bit. And then also, as the bay window gets, um, added, to tie that as a metal roof into the porch roof, so this comes together. This is a, a unique element here with the house, where you have this swept roof, which really helps nicely on the corner of this, uh, property to, to help with the scale. Um, and certainly, these are one-story elements here that, again, are in keeping with the scale and, and, um, relative to the street and so forth. Um, so this is not a two-story addition of any kind.
Jerry, just for the, um, for the council members, while that picture's up, for those of you not familiar with our house, today, our porch, we do have a covered porch. That, that front stoop is covered with what you're seeing there. But the window, because it's not a bay window, sits behind it, so it's not a continuous line that Jerry is showing on that roof line, which we think is one of the enhancements we're creating. That window's set back, so the, the covered porch protrudes out from the rest of the house.
So finally, the, the covered porch off the, uh, the rear, what's the rear on this particular property, is located here and shown, um, wait, let's move over. Shown here at, on the front of the house, and then, um, this is an image, as you would see it from the rear, here, and then this is a side view of the front porch. Um, so you can see it's a fairly low-pitched roof. And keep, keeping the stone on the sides of the stoop, keep, keep it with the rest of the house, so, I think it's very much in keeping with the existing architecture, and should look like it blends right in. What's it would be built. Um, certainly be glad to answer any questions.
Is it time for the council to weigh in, uh, at this point?
Yeah, it's time for any questions from the council.
Uh, I had two observations from the presentation. One was, uh, in, in, in the written documents, you made some comparisons with the Montgomery County, uh, building code, and contrasted it with the, uh, Martins Edition. And when the Martins Edition code was established, its intention was to be stricter than the Montgomery County. And so the fact that they allow it, we don't, is deliberate. Uh, it wasn't an oversight. It was, it was part of the design. But with that said, I, I went back today and looked at all of our variance hearings since we first started doing them about, uh, 2013 or 14. And about two-thirds, three-quarters of all of the variances that we hear have been related to the established building line. It's a kind of a fuzzy concept. It's not a fixed line from the street. It can move back and forth, as Doug Lomar has reminded us, depending on what your neighbors do. And I've never been actually convinced of the aesthetic nature of the established building line. And it just, to me, it creates a lot of nuisance problems that we've had to deal with. So my inclination is, uh, established building lines are not one of the major things I would like to focus on. On the other hand, the one significant item on the list is lot coverage, where you go over by a few hundred square feet. Uh, and to me, that is the only, uh, judicable, I mean, they all are because they all violate, but the, the square footage overlay, uh, is the, uh, is the one non-established building line, uh, variance that, that you're seeking. So I just wanted to put that out to my council, uh, to the council members, that, uh, established building lines have been a mess since we first started doing this, uh, and responsible for almost all of our variance hearings.
Um, my initial impressions are that established building lines have a purpose, but this does seem to be sort of an extraordinary case in terms of, for whatever reason, the, um, situation, the situating of the prop, of the house on the property. So I guess it's a situational situation. I think it I think it does meet the standard of, um, the extraordinarily peculiar, unusual, practical difficulty, exceptional or undue hardship. My question would be whether there is a way to, in any way, um, scale down any of the additions so that they are, so that we could gain more, or reduce the lot coverage and, um, and demonstrate that they're the minimum reasonably necessary in order to achieve your goals.
Question for the applicants to please answer.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was waiting for, um, the village's, um, attorney to tell us, because I know we were trying to be respectful of the Zoom can be challenging with community speaking.
Yes, thank you.
So the, the project, and I'll turn it over to Jerry, the, the project has changed over time. Our original goals were to do the bay window and a porch. Um, architecturally, we believe that modifying the front porch, I'll call it, again, not the side porch, but the front porch and the steps, architecturally, would work better than just putting on a, a bay window, um, which is why we ended up go, exceeding the lot coverage. Because I believe, I'm, I, you can't see where my arrow is, I'm, I want to turn this over to Jerry. But I think that we did try to minimize it. Jerry, I can't recall in our proposal, because I know we looked at different sizes on the side porch. Um, if you look at the side porch, you see two pieces of it, we see seventeen by nine and then we see an extra ten feet. Jerry, is the extra ten feet included? I know we talked about possibly scaling down the side.
It currently is included.
So we could take out ten by ten, part of that, to scale down the side of the proposed. I don't know if that gets exactly there, Mrs. Chairman, but I think it's, it's certainly closer. Um, Jerry, I don't know, I know this is, we're doing this live, but we're looking at a hundred and eighty feet. Can we get, you know, what can we do towards that? Can we get, I think we may not be able to get to full one eighty, but how close can we?
Yeah, that, that ten by ten section would be approximately a hundred square feet, so that would certainly get us under a hundred. The exceeded amount of lot coverage would be under a hundred feet at that point. Um, and, and I, and I know, um, one of the council members brought up the Montgomery County items, and, and the reason for that comparison, um, and I certainly understand that the village was trying to be stricter than the Montgomery County, uh, uh, regulations. Um, I just wanted to make note that some of these items that I was comparing to are actually some things that they have recently done, um, in terms of lot coverage requirements, uh, setbacks and so forth, um, that as they have experienced, been experiencing these similar kind of situations, they have done an update recently, um, and that's within the last few years. So it's, um, so part of the reason is, is they've experienced these same kind of things in the other parts of the county, they've, uh, you know, things like the bay window, for example, it can now, uh, be a three by ten bay window, uh, it can encroach, it can, um, not be counted against lot coverage, um, you know, many things, and it can be, have a foundation under it a, and all that. So it, and that's just happened recently. So certainly, they, I think we're in the same, you know, similar situation you guys were in terms of, um, the regulations, but i- it's been more of an update than it is, um, you know, uh, being restrictive or more restrictive kind of thing. And, um, so I just kind of want to point that out, but that was kind of one of the main reasons to, to compare the two, because since they have done some updates, and it is my understanding that the village, um, has not in a number of years, but, um, again, it's just based on the, the Montgomery County's experiences and what they've seen out there.
Good, that's, uh, that's very helpful.
I, I do think on this call, since, um, um, the, the chair asked, looking at the picture again, that on that pro, proposed covered porch, if we drew a line with that extra ten by ten, I think we're, we'd be prepared to, um, have the village, um, council consider it this evening, um, by just dropping that hundred, reducing, um, our proposed, um, additions by that hundred square feet. You know, again, I have to get into the architecture about going beyond that, but that looks like an easy way to reduce the, the addition by that hundred square feet. Right?
Right.
And if I could also just mention, it just, again, some of the changes in the Montgomery County side, they, they had not, uh, they had started to remove some of these items from the lot coverage, uh, inclusion, which would be the bay window, the, the front porch and steps, um, a- and so forth. So that's kind of where the balance of these things, uh, we would all, all of a sudden not be in a lot coverage situation if you're, you know, looking at Montgomery County. Understand, this is, they aren't, you know, this isn't, this is your jurisdiction, not theirs, but it's just, uh, just the things that they have been doing, um, in terms of what is being, um, included in the lot coverage. And again, they, they've just made changes, um, a- and quite frankly, they've actually, there's even bigger items that they've changed, which is actually they, for any addition, they don't even, uh, look at the established building line, they completely ignore it for an addition. Uh, so that's obviously way more, uh, significant, um, and so forth. So, um, that's a big one, but, you know, we're, we're not going there, but anyway.
But Councilman Alexander, I did want to stress that you, we've lived in the village fifteen years, we respect the rules. Um, you can look at this and question, like, we're really not getting a much larger house, that's not the intent. It's, it's really the aesthetic, it's just, we believe after living here, we want to enjoy a little bit more outside space. Um, we're envious of some of our neighbors that have that. Um, we thought it would be a little bit easier than it is, but, um, like, again, we spent a lot of time with, um, the village attorney, with Doug going back here, and he may have told you, you may have heard some of that back and forth, but, you know, we got a lot of input and feedback, there was a lot of time spent. Um, this is not just some large addition, it's, it was really minimal, but to us, it, it's important because we want to make this our permanent home. As our kids have gotten older, we're now thinking, what happens the next ten, fifteen years? We, we, we love this neighborhood and we don't want to have to do anything other than continue to live here, and, you know, with some small enhancements that we think will increase, the neighbors will appreciate, they'll see it more than we would, but we'll get to enjoy it as well.
Todd or Katya or Jeff, any questions?
No, no questions for me, I'm supportive of this approach.
Dino, no questions, I'm supportive as well.
I basically have the same questions and comments as, um, Arthur and Susan already, so they've been answered. So thank you.
And with, with that then, we can ask if there's anyone else joining the hearing that would like to ask questions of the applicant or make a statement in support or opposition. And Niles, do you want to call on folks, one at a time?
Yeah, so we had sort of a list that was submitted by the, by, uh, Amy and Andrew, so I'm just gonna use that to call on people, just to make it easy. Um, so the first one was, uh, Brad, and I, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, Nugent.
That's right, you got it right.
Perfect. So if you'd like to make a comment, uh, you can, if you could just please, uh, keep the comments to less than, uh, to two minutes, that'd be good. Thank you.
Uh, I'll, I'll keep it shorter than that, I'll give it, uh, ten seconds. And, uh, no, we, we're very supportive of this, my wife and I, uh, unfortunately, she can enjoy, but, uh, we're very supportive of the, uh, the proposed addition and, uh, you know, hope they, hope that they all get approved.
All right, perfect. And then, uh, John.
Scheider.
Scheider? Tysh?
Chidder, T S is silent.
Okay, uh, I apologize for that, um, but if you could make your comments.
Sure, I'd be happy to. On behalf of Patty, my wife, who is here, there you go, um, and, and myself, we live at seventy-two oh one, directly across the street from Amy and Andrew, and, um, I think all the proposed improvements you guys are, uh, in both contextually appropriate relative to your house, and I think also contextually appropriate relative to the neighborhood in the corner that you live on. So we're pleased with that, we support it. And I'd also make a comment on the coverage issue. I think on the margin, the ten square foot, I personally would not give it up, Andrew and Amy, I think is de minimis in nature, and I think that what you proposed does get in, like I said earlier, so we're supportive of everything that you're asking for in your variances.
Thanks, Jim.
Perfect. All right, then, is, uh, Carol Kirkoff? I don't, I didn't think so, but I just want to check.
They, they were traveling, I know that they were gonna have spotty reception during this meeting.
Okay, yes, I think that was in your notes, so I just wanted to check, just to make sure.
They did submit written comments that I know you all have.
Yep. And then the, if the Browns want to make their comment, I know both of them were on the call.
Yeah, hi, uh, this is Jeremy, so I'll go first, Debbie's, Debbie's also, uh, on, but, um, yeah, we've lived across the street from the, from the Hermans for fifteen years. First of all, they're great neighbors, uh, we love having them there, and we love how they take care of their property and, you know, everything they've done with their house over the years, so very happy to be their neighbors and, uh, you know, from our perspective, at least from my perspective, Debbie can, can comment also, but, uh, you know, we think what they're doing is great, uh, we're fully supportive of it, and, uh, we hope that their variance is granted exactly as they've requested.
Yeah, and I have really nothing to add, other than we, we are definitely in support, we think it's gonna look really nice, um, you know, we think it'll enhance the neighborhood and, uh, enhance all of our property values, uh, we're definitely in support.
Excellent, all right, and then, uh, Sherry Innes?
Innes.
Innes?
Hi. Uh, I've lived, I'm at three four oh eight Taylor Street, on the side of the Hermans. I've lived here since two thousand and two and remember that house being built, um, and I, I've known the Hermans, they've been great neighbors, um, I think their addition makes complete sense and is aesthetically pleasing, goes along with what they have right now, is certainly not, uh, does not, um, take away from the aesthetics of the house, um, a- and fits in with the neighborhood, it fits in with the house. So I'm fully in support of it, I would hope that you grant the variance as well.
Perfect. Now, I thought, I saw Craig Sapirstein, uh, come on, but I wasn't sure, so.
Yes, I, I, I actually had to, to join by phone, I, I live on Chestnut Street in the village, and I just wanted to also, uh, offer up my support for, for the variant, I think it'll, it'll be very aesthetically pleasing and, uh, I think it'll frankly enhance all of our property values. Thank you.
All right. Now that concludes the list of people who, uh, we knew wanted to speak, is there anyone else on the call who would like to speak?
Okay, so there's no rebuttal, so I guess now.
Right, so.
We're ready for.
Now we can close the record and move to council member deliberations.
Would you like any clues?
Can I ask a question before, um, it's, um, council only, uh, to the, to the chair? Um, this is our first time experiencing this, so do you evaluate our proposal as submitted and then make a separate decision on whether or not to have that hundred square foot reduction? I just, do you look at it both ways? I'm just curious how that actually works once you go to, um, deliberations.
Um, I, well, I think it's great that you were willing to, um, offer that as an option. I think I would like to defer to Ron as to the best procedure.
Yeah, so that, that can be discussed during the deliberations, and the, the council can discuss both options, the option as submitted and the option presented at tonight's hearing.
Yeah, I, so my, our, our, our viewer, lie in front of you, um, but if, if it's an up or down vote on what we proposed, and it would be a, a negative vote, but with the reduction of the hundred square feet, the council would approve it, then we would like to have that as an option B, as opposed to just the up and down vote of what was submitted.
Yes, and even that can come out in the deliberations.
Yeah, in other words, our preference is to keep it as is, um, or as close to as is as possible. Um, we don't think it, you know, as John stated, it, it's really not much more, it's just giving us a little bit more space in the porch.
But saying that, we, we, we'd like to give you the flexibility so that we can walk away with, hopefully, one of the two options, as opposed to no option.
Right.
Would, would the council like me to stop sharing the screen, or is it okay to leave this here, or?
Uh, unshared.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, let me start off with, uh, for the council, everyone, please jump in. Uh, I see that the historical conditions leading up to this are, are kind of unusual, the way the established building line was set through the, through the middle of the house, uh, how that was approved, uh, I, I don't know, but, uh, the changes are minimal, um, neighbors all are enthusiastically in favor of it, uh, and I would be in favor of approving the, uh, application as originally submitted. Uh, so that's, that's where I stand on, on this, but rest of the council, please, uh, proceed.
Katya?
Sorry, struggling here with mute. Um, so, my thoughts are that the changes do appear to be minimal, and it's great to see the neighbor's support, um, for the, the, um, improvements to the house. It does look great, I mean, certainly seems to be in line with what the house is already there today. I am concerned about the, um, lot coverage, so I would, uh, be definitely in support of the, of approving, uh, the variance request without the ten by ten porch, or the extra piece of the porch. Um, if it is included, then I am not as, uh, certain of that, uh, because of the lot coverage issue.
And I pretty much concur, exactly. Um, I would prefer, I mean, I, I understand the desire to have a porch of that size, but, um, I, I also really appreciate your willingness to, um, work with the council in order to, um, make the variances as minimal as possible. That's very much appreciated, and I would definitely support option B.
Hi, folks, I just want to echo the sentiments of Arthur and, and others, um, you know, the, the very thoughtful proposal and the neighbors' strong support, uh, having been in, living in Martin's Editions for, oh, uh, you know, it's gonna be closer to ten years than, than, than not. I wish, uh, some of the development that's gone around our house actually had this level of thought and involvement of the neighbors, so I, I support the proposal as is. Thanks.
Todd?
I'm sorry, Jeff, the proposal is submitted or is revised?
As submitted.
I really, um, thanks, thanks, Susan. Um, I don't find the added, uh, hundred square, square feet to be that as much of a concern in, in terms of the, the variance, I think we're granting a variance or we're not, and, and that doesn't, it doesn't bother me to have that added, added square footed, so, um, I'm in favor of the, uh, plan as, as submitted.
Okay, so I guess we vote now on?
Yeah, someone would like to make a motion.
Um, someone else maybe? Or?
If I make a motion, then we approve the plan as submitted by the applicants.
Second?
Better known as option A.
I, I will second that. Jeff, here, I third that, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, I am opposed.
Me too.
I'm sorry, I am totally for option B, but, um, I am opposed to option A, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, the, the motion passes three to two, so the, the variance decision will be written up with the approval of option A, and that'll probably take us about a week, two weeks to get that written up and approved by the council, and then it will be issued by Niles. And that, that concludes the variance hearing, thank you very much, everyone. And that, that concludes the variance hearing, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you to the council again, and I, I wanna can call out Doug, and um, the village attorney, everybody, it was an interesting process for us, and we learned a lot, but we couldn't have done it, um, without really the support of Martin's addition, and then, of course, the, the council, thank you very much, everybody be safe. Uh, first and foremost, we have a wonderful village, I think we've all been taking good care of our neighbors, and, and, and maintaining our social distance, we have a little bit in front of us before we're out of the woods yet, but, uh, everybody continue to be safe, please.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you.
Take it to the council, thank you very much.
Take care, thank you.
Take care, bye.
So then, Susan, do we log off and log back in at seven thirty, or should we proceed on?
Seven thirty, I think.
Yeah, I'd say seven thirty, just because there'll be residents there who'll probably want to come for the regular meeting, so I think...
Okay.
Well...
Are we using the, the same login information?
Yes, hmm, and I, in the email to the community, I said that as well, so anybody who wants to use it, do it that way.
Okay, see you in a bit.
Alright, see you in a bit.
Bye.
Bye.
Yep.
And we are going to call to order the council meeting for Thursday, July sixteenth. Uh, the first order of business is actually to elect officers, since this is the first meeting of the fiscal year, uh, we need to have new officers. So, does anyone have...
Could I have an honor of nominating Susan Fattick as chair?
Thank you. Uh, do you wanna just go ahead and do the full?
I can do them, do them all, Arthur.
Do the full nominations, I think you're on a roll there.
Uh, why don't, has somebody else, uh, pick up the burden here?
Well, now, none of us feels as honorable as you, Martha.
Well, I will nominate Todd for, um, vice chair, and Arthur for, uh, treasurer, and humbly myself for secretary.
Thank you.
And Jeff, I nominate Jeff for member at large.
Yes, that's right. I, I was unclear, but I, I was unsure how to call that, just at large, that's right.
Okay, so would someone like to move to, um, appro- approve or elect the officers as stated, as nominated?
I... I, do, do we have to second that, or make that a proposal?
I think I need a motion, don't I?
Yeah, so somebody move first, so did somebody make a motion to?
Arthur started it, and Todd finished, didn't he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, so we're good.
Then vote.
Vote, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, okay, so now, do we have any residents who would like to, um, opine on anything? Alyssa Bean? Hi, Alyssa, no, she's not there yet. No resident comments?
Alright.
No, okay, so the next order of business is appointing committee members for the coming, for this fiscal year, um, and so as currently constituted for the next year, as proposed for the next year, community engagement committee, Sally Van Tassel of Shepherd Street, Renee Redpath of Quincy Street, and Keith Allen of Turner Lane. Election committee, George McElise of Melville Place, Josh Bowers of Summit Avenue, Tiffany Sisna of Bradley Lane, and the ethics committee, Lori Mitchell of Cummins Lane, Debbie Rumel of Raymond, and Mark Efron of Raymond. Tree supervisor, Monte Boland. So would anyone like to uh, move that we appoint members as proposed?
I will move that we appoint members as proposed.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And I do want to thank all the, uh, new committee members for volunteering, and look forward to working with them over the coming year.
Right, we are always grateful for our volunteers, past and present, and I did want to add that a couple of residents have expressed interest informally in participating or of becoming members of the committees, and if they do, um, commit, then we can add them and vote on them later. Okay. So uh, we next have an ordinance to introduce. Right?
Is there, okay, yeah, go ahead, hmm?
Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash seven dash one. Ron, do you want to give an explanation, or shall I just?
Yeah, sure, I can give it, an explanation, so it it, it came to the attention of the prior council, and and the manager, that the village currently does not have regulations with respect to what signs are allowed in, in private property, and so this ordinance would do that, basically ban private signs within the right of way, in order to eliminate issues like clutter and motorist distraction and the like, and then would also regulate private signs on private property by basically imposing sign restrictions, and requiring them, for example, to be located two feet from the nearest public improvement sidewalk, for example, for the same reasons. And the ordinance as proposed i- is somewhat similar to what some other towns in the area have done. This one is particularly similar to regulations in Chevy Chase View. And so that's the summary, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I actually have a question, Ron, is if somebody puts a sign up on their own property, is, are they allowed, is this, can the sign say anything that, that resident wants?
Yes. Basically, yes.
So even if people find it hateful? Um, that's, that's...
Freedom of speech.
Well, yeah, if, if there was an instance of of hate speech, you know, then then I would say it's outside of the intent of this ordinance, I mean, th- this ordinance is to regulate and contemplate typical signs that one might find, like political signs, real estate signs, yard sale signs, and the like, and if there was a, a hate speech sign, then that, that could be regulated under other laws.
Under state, county laws, or, or, or other, we're... I'm just trying to get ahead of curves, and, and...
Sure, sure.
See that in, in Martin's edition, but I don't think we can just assume.
No, so i- it, it depends on, on the, the content. Um, sometimes it may be a, a private cause of action, and we did have an example in a neighboring town. For example, there was a resident who was particularly unhappy with a, a builder who was building homes in the area, and so, you know, posted signs up saying "This builder is a wrath," and so on and so forth, and you know, it's outside of the express regulation of that jurisdiction's sign ordinance, however, you know, it does present a private cause of action for slander. Um, if someone were to, to post something that is, is just hate speech, then, you know, I would think that we would be able to rely on the police to remove it under federal laws, but, you know, I'd have to look into that.
Just curious, thanks.
Ron, as I read the ordinance, there, there seems to be two aspects, n- not, not the, not the run, not the public right of way, but the private. There seems to be two pieces to it, one is physical limitations, uh, size and so on, the other for, there are, there are at least two specific kinds of signs, temporary events and property sales that are mentioned in particular, um. Uh, it seems like when we start mentioning kinds of communication, we start getting into uh, first amendment, uh, uh, aspects to it, and we're already getting into the aesthetics, we have said that we do not regulate aesthetics in the building code, we don't say what color you may or may not paint your house, or what style you can use, and but this is starting to get into the realm I'm uncomfortable with, both of the freedom of speech and of aesthetics. Uh, the, there are, part of the code talks about nuisances, rights, uh, uh, lines of sight, uh, and specific dangers, that I think are, are one thing. The others I'm just uncomfortable with, uh, regulating private speech on private property, uh, in, in, in this way, for the two, two main reasons, they're getting into aesthetics, getting into freedom of speech.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I understand, so really, the focus is not aesthetics per se, but visual clutter, character of the neighborhood, but, yeah, I, I understand your point, and well taken, and if the council doesn't wanna get into that area, you know, that, that's certainly something that that we could do, the ordinance could be revised to perhaps only prohibit signs in the right of way period, and then not address what happens on private property. Uh, this is really presented for, for your discussion. Uh, they, you can decide what, what you think is appropriate, um, maybe, maybe I should point out that the two categories that you mentioned, real estate signs and temporary event signs, are basically exceptions to the general prohibition on commercial signs. So if, you know, for example, someone wanted to place a commercial sign in their front yard, it would be prohibited, but an exception to that is a real estate sign, so long as the real estate sign follows the, the requirements that are set forth in the ordinance with respect to location from the right of way, size, and direction.
Okay, oh, so, could you elaborate on that, that commercial, uh, uh, what, what is it that restricts commercial signs?
So there's a sentence that says, you know, no sign may be erected unless it's erected in accordance with the rest of this article, that's at the section seven five oh two.
Oh, so that's in this present, in the present, that we don't have a, there's not an existing code that prohibits commercial?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay. So basically, the ordinance says, all signs are prohibited unless they're allowed by the express words in this article.
Ah, okay, Jeff, you were saying something?
Yeah, thanks so much, and, and really appreciate the thoughtfulness behind introducing this, um. The, the one thing I just wanna put on for consideration is, I know a really big issue heading in, and we discussed at the time on the candidate form, is, is around safety. And there's been concern, especially with COVID, around the traffic of cars and the speed of cars on, on streets, and so the only thing I, I, I would want to, um, make sure is that if residents want to put up a sign, you know, on their lawn, um, and it, you know, whether it's around the idea that kids live here, or, you know, something to, in regards to safety, um, you know, that I didn't see anything in this ordinance that would prohibit that, but just wanna make sure that, you know, it's, it's thoughtful and recognize that when safety is a concern, especially during these times around traffic and other things, that that is part of the consideration as we're viewing this. Over.
Oh, Lynn Welly here.
Um, Lynn, we'll have time for resident comments at the end of the meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to talk about this subject, or is this council members talking now?
Um, it's currently council members.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm not familiar with all the faces, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, but there will be time, and this is not going to be adopted if, if, um, passed, to not, anyway, there will be another hearing period at the next meeting.
I just, I ju- I'd heard things which prompted some thoughts, which were basically related to what has already been said. I can wait.
Okay.
If that's what you prefer.
That would be wonderful, thank you, Lynn. Anybody else, council?
Um, yeah, look, if nobody else is saying, let me just go back, um, I think the, the, the part of it that the part of that deals with the right of way, um, I find is, is unexceptional, uh, but for the reasons that I mentioned, the the control of, uh, of speech, in a sense, on, on the private property, um, I, I do find problems with, now, picking up on what Jeff's had said, and, and is implied in their, in their, I think, we, there, there should be some way of saying, to, talking about safety issues, uh, rights, uh, uh, lines of sight, uh, those kinds of issues that where signs may, or other, it's not just signs, I think we say that there, this is respect to other, uh, structures on, on lawns that, uh, it could impede. It could impede pedestrian passage, create safety issues, uh, I would like to see it more in, in in those terms, rather than in the speech form. Ron, tell me, don't we have, aren't there other restrictions on what you can do on your private property? That, that impacts, uh, pedestrian safety, or, or passerby safety, or, or lines of sight, and that sort of thing, I don't, I can't play my finger on it, but...
We, we have in the code currently a provision which prohibits items to be erected or stalled, constructed within the right of way, without the village's approval, and we regulate vegetation and the like with respect to motor site lines, but not signage, currently.
With that, with the current language, uh, could be in that, could that be interpreted to include signage?
No, I, I don't believe so, you know, maybe, maybe a, a sign post in the right of way, but not on private property.
Okay. Is there, does anyone else have any, have any issue with right of way, with the, with the ordinance as written having to do, do you have, uh, having to do just with the right of way?
I actually think we need it. I think, um...
I agree.
This should be implemented, a- at least with respect to the right of way.
But we should also continue to talk about the
About the rest of it.
Private property as well.
Exactly. So, other thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to get some other people's views on this, about how, what, what aspects of signs is it that we like or don't like, what are we trying to prohibit, uh, why are we doing it? Uh, and so we could draw some from, some finer distinctions about what it is that we are controlling, and why.
Well, I think this size limitation, sixteen square feet, does seem like something, uh, we would anything exceeding sixteen square feet, seems like something, um, we would not be happy to have, even on private property, because of the clutter and the character of the neighborhood, it's not really purely aesthetics when when a sign exceeds sixteen square feet, I think.
I mean, frankly, even sixteen square feet, that's a lot.
It's pretty big, yes, it's three by five point two, or four by four.
Let me, let me give you an example, suppose, uh, somebody is an artist and places a big art structure up in front, they say it's not a sign, it's a work of art. How do we know the difference? Or if somebody puts a statue up?
It's, it's pretty clear that it's not a sign.
No, it isn't, if somebody, if I say put up a sign in the front that says, "In Zanadu did Kublai Khan the stately pleasure dome decree for sale cheap?" Uh, you could say that's poetry, that's not, uh, it's, I'm, it's, it's an artistic expression. So, uh, we need some understanding of, uh...
You wanna hear?
Do we control all things that go into yards?
Well, I think that for a case like... Well, I think that for a case like this, which sounds pretty unique, right? I don't anticipate, for an example that you provided, it sounds pretty unique. The village can always look into options, consideration as exceptions, right? Because this is a unique case. I think what we're trying to address is general guidance, right, for signs, not necessarily for ones that people may want to put out today, but just in the future as well, not the one-off cases that could be a unique situation.
Right, and you would always have discretion to determine whether a particular item does require enforcement or not. So, if there is something that is art and not a sign, you could find that it's outside of the ordinance, or, as Jeffrey noted, a slow "Children I Play" or something, that's, you know, one of those folding portable signs, so that would be outside of the ordinance as well.
Okay. I'll just leave it and say, this is tending to get into areas that can border on free speech and other kinds of distinctions that I don't think we have, ought to be getting into. If we can, worded is that evade those things, I'd be much more happy to look at it.
Does anybody else have concerns?
I was comfortable with it.
I was as well.
Yeah, I'm essentially comfortable with it, and my only objection is really minor compared to, like, first amendment concerns, because I don't really think, I'm not concerned about the first amendment, although I certainly practice it at will. Very tiny objection, but the two-day period, posting, allowing temporary event signs two days before an event, seems like it could be extended to a week or something, very minor thing, and I would definitely say the removal immediately after should be enforced, because that's very annoying, and they stay up forever.
Yeah, that's a good point. I agree with both a week and removal immediately following being enforced.
I agree.
So, we would just sort of take this under advisement? It will be discussed again, next, at the next meeting, presumably next month.
Right, so, yeah, if you wish, you could formally introduce it with a motion, so that it would be documented for a public hearing at your next meeting, and you could introduce it as amended, with any amendments you find appropriate at this time.
So, but do we want to attach any amendments at this time?
Maybe changing the two days to seven.
The two days to seven, but anything else?
Not.
I'm just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Immediate removal is there, it's just a matter of enforcement.
And, like I said, my biggest piece was around the safety, but it sounds like there is a process that the village and the council can make exceptions if needed, and work with residents if there's something there that they feel strongly about improving the safety of their street. So, that was my biggest concern.
Okay, so, shall we go ahead and introduce ordinance 2020-7-1 to amend chapter seven of the village code to regulate signs on private property in the public right-of-way as amended? Do I have a motion?
I will move to introduce the motion, as Susan stated with the numbers.
Second?
I'm sorry, I can't recall it right off the top of my head.
Second.
Yep.
Okay. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, all.
Excellent.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Doug Lowmeyer's building administrator's report. Is Doug there?
Doug, did he drop, did he get dropped?
I know Sam here.
He was, he was on earlier.
He was at the beginning.
Hang on, he...
He's not there, is he?
Yeah, I'm just checking to see. Yeah, I don't see him. Hang on one second, and we'll see.
Should we do Arthur's report?
Wait, why don't you do...
Okay, so Arthur?
Okay.
You want to...
Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
The two items in here that I wanted to discuss.
You dropped off the meeting, so I'm gonna, so, I'm just gonna put you on speaker on my phone, and you can give your report, does that make sense? Okay.
Okay, actually Doug's here, so, Arthur, hold on.
Okay, Doug, why don't you, you want Doug to go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Doug.
All right, I just got a few things to go over. At 3507 Bradley Lane, the applicant has submitted a building permit and demolition permit to the village. We're waiting for county approval of the plans. Information meeting was held on Wednesday, June 17th, for 7204 Chestnut Street. Construction has been completed, and the staff is in the process of closing out the building permit and refunding the applicant's performance bond. At 7200 Dell Field, the county is reviewing the application, and we've completed our review, and waiting for comments back from the applicant, and the resident information has not been scheduled. At 3515 Raymond Street, the county is reviewing the plans for moving and construction of a new house. We've submitted our contacts, comments to the applicant and the architect, and we're still having some discussion over the definition of wall plane length, so that's ongoing. At 3407 Thorn Apple, the applicant, the student is continuing on the project, but the applicant is proposing to revise the plans to eliminate the one-car garage and add a detached two-car garage. They've been advised that they need to submit plans to Montgomery County, and then to the village, and we're waiting for that application to come in. And on the letter that was written back to the state back in the fall, in the last couple of days, I've been having conversations with the state, and they are planning to come out to two of the intersections and make improvements to that, but they have no schedule for it. That would be at the corner of Quincy and Taylor. They're looking to repay the intersection to try to reduce the ponding. As far as the other improvements, they're still on hold, they're claiming that they can't get to them because of the virus, but they are still planning on looking into them. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you. Arthur, now you're on.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
The report this month is-
There were no questions, so, you're good.
Thanks.
I'll talk to you tomorrow. All right, bye.
We have more or less the end of fiscal year 2020, revenues and expenditures are now in. There'll still be a few more things coming in, and we still have to be audited, but our revenues from the, for the year was about 16% higher than we had planned. It seems like an age ago, 15 months ago, we brought in almost a million dollars, have been budgeted for 852,000, and we have spent about 9%, 10% less than we had thought, even though, as you recall from last month, we made a lot of adjustments to various accounts, where we were overspending, we were also underspending in others. So, the net across the board was underspending by about 10%. There's one new item that we've added here, and let me read it to you. In the current month, we plan to transfer $50,000 from the village's savings account in the MLGIP, the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool, to the checking account, cover projected expenses. We added this as a suggestion of our new accountants. We, as you all know, we have, are bringing in more of our basic bookkeeping and accounting into the office. Niles is learning QuickBooks and is our new part-time accountant. We hired another firm to fill in, to do the month-end and year-end stuff, and the total cost of all this is about $20,000, or two-thirds less than we were spending on accounting last year. And we have more control over it in-house. Now, the new accountants had suggested to us that we have more of a formal presentation of how we move money around, that in the past, it was quite out of hope. Get a call from the accountant, say, "I'm writing a bunch of checks, can you move some money?" And I would go into the accounts and do it. And our accountants now say, "Present it to the council how much you intend to do. You need to have some kind of an audit trail there. You don't need to get explicit approval, but by approving the treasurer's report, you indicate that you've informed them, and that they agree with this." And then I guess next week, or next month, I should say, how much we actually did move to complete the audit trail here. So that's what we're going to be doing going forward, is having a regular cash replenishment plan that will maintain our cash balances at roughly one and a half percent times our monthly payment, so that we're not stuck, we don't get stuck with any late charges, or bonus check charges, because we don't have enough money in the bank. On the other hand, we will maintain our savings account to the maximum amount possible. So that's one new innovation in the accounting framework.
Excellent, thanks. Thanks, Arthur.
Okay.
Okay, Niles, manager's report.
Your version of mine, I was gonna print it off, and then I didn't.
Where is it?
Let's see.
Is it that?
It's, uh, right here. Oh, no, I thought you, yeah, maybe it's not there.
Is it in here? Sorry, I absconded with Niles's report. I don't think it's there.
I guess it should be just one page, I don't know where it went. In any case, here, I'm just gonna read it from the screen, sorry, I have it here on...
It's important to be flexible in this life.
The screen, okay.
Especially for me.
Yeah. Because I was gonna, okay.
Ready? No, that's Doug, sorry.
No, that's okay. My bad, I was gonna print off two copies, and then I forgot. Okay, so the first thing I want to say is that we'd like to thank everyone who responded to the walkability survey. The survey garnered 192 responses, which is one of, if not the highest response rates the village, a village survey has gotten in the village's history. The office is, meaning me right now, is working on compiling the results of the walkability survey for the walkability committee to review at their next meeting in August. The date will be determined soon, but I just wanted to give everybody an update there. We're also completing our work on the directory, and residents will, residents will receive an email sometime, probably next week, asking if they want their email in the directory. So, this was a decision made by the council, I believe either last fall or the fall before, to include emails, but we are asking residents whether they want it in the directory or not, so it will be a simple yes/no. The cybersecurity, the village is currently implementing a lot of the changes from the cybersecurity report, in terms of improving our infrastructure, and that work is ongoing. One of the things, okay, hang on one second, and do one other thing. Because we had the variance here before this, I'm gonna have to plug in the laptop here.
Oh.
And see...
Where's the plug?
Plug, I think, closest plug, I'm gonna move this. So, as I said, we're doing the infrastructure. One of the things that we will be doing, and related to cybersecurity, is the village council and village committees, so the village council will get new email addresses that have the @martinsaddition.org domain name. This is so that they're housed under the, under the village server. This is both for cybersecurity and also with records retention, so that all of those emails are stored already with the village records. Similarly, committees that don't already have a email, so pretty much all of them, but the election committee, will get an email address as well, and then the policy will be, whenever there's communication regarding one of these committees, that the box, the inbox for that committee be CC'd on all those emails, so that they're stored in one place that will help again with cybersecurity and records retention. So I just wanted to make that clear. One question I have for the council, this is a very small thing, is how they would like the domains to be, whether it be first name, dot last name, or just first name, or, so that is something, it's an administrative thing.
So we can do it by email.
So they can do, so you can do it by email to decide, but I just want to throw that out there to the council.
Thank you.
We are still working for the GIS update, we're working with Wallace Montgomery to finish up and get a new map. I haven't gotten the latest from them yet, so I'll, my plan is to follow up tomorrow to make sure that we're on schedule with that project. The management assistant search has gone well so far, we have over 20 applicants. I conducted six first-round interviews last, over the last couple of weeks. We will be doing second-round interviews with a few of the remaining candidates, and I've also received a couple of the writing samples that were part of that process already. So we're scheduling those out over this week and early next week, and we hope to get that wrapped up by the end of this month, so we should have the management assistant by that point. And then, the last note, last November, the village council approved a new street light near 3401, 3403 Thorn Apple Street. This was back in November. The village office is finalizing the details with Pepco to actually get that installed, and that should, that work should proceed relatively shortly. That process, once we got them to where we needed them to be, is, I think, on pace pretty well. So that concludes the main portion of my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Niles, a quick question on the streetlights. Were they able to get it from the manufacturer, did they have one stock?
So they have, so that's a good question. So they have in stock what was similar to what is already installed. In fact, I had the, I had to talk to their staff, their, their operations staff, that's the word I was looking for, directly about this, and they confirmed that the light that they're gonna put in is the same as they have on record for all of the other lights in that area. So it should be the same as what is already there.
Because I thought we had some extras somewhere, but nobody could quite knew where that was.
So I talked to- So I talked to, so yeah, yes, I know that. In fact, I even talked to a previous manager about his recollection of that. And he also could not, we combined could not find any record of or any physical place, including looking in our storage service, any actual lights. So at some point, it seems that they were used. The records around that is, is a little incomplete. And so that's one of the things that I'm working on trying to get up to, up to date.
Okay.
Anything else?
Niles, thanks for that, that was very helpful. I know, heading into the meeting, there were a number of residents who expressed they wanted to have an update on the assistant manager in the Walkability study, so it was good to hear that. And this is where I'm gonna look at others and, also Ron, if I'm doing anything wrong, you can slap me on the virtual wrist because I'm a newbie. But I know there are a couple of things I just wanted to put on the table for discussion, at least. And we could do that now, or do we do that as we transition to the resident comments? It had to do with the redevelopment of the library on Connecticut Avenue and also the possibility of proposing hosting a town hall with residents in the fall.
Yeah, so that's, that's up to the chair where that information should be presented.
So we can, yeah, you can throw it out now? I guess you did.
Well, how about I'll throw it out and I'll toss it up a little bit higher, but I'll make this really quick. So, well, why don't we start with the town hall? So I, I think we all recognize that the residents, our neighbors, our friends, there's been expressed interest in having a little bit more time to discuss, you know, whether it's concerns or issues, or generally engage with members of the council beyond the few minutes allocated to the, the monthly agenda. So one thing I wanted to put on the table is to look at the possibility of having a virtual town hall, perhaps after August, which is a big, you know, month of, perhaps folks may even be taking time off even in the times of COVID, but maybe in the early fall, sometime in September, so that's one. And then the second I wanted to put out, and this has been circulating, so many of you have seen this. I know it was on the community listserv here for, for our community. But it has to do with the redevelopment of the library on Connecticut Avenue. And there's been some concern where the, not entirely sure where it's coming from, but somewhere on the county council, there had been a request for a preliminary proposals for redevelopment of the library site. And I think the concern has been that there has not been a lot of room for community input. I actually saw, this is, this is before our election, I saw as, as a concerned citizen, a draft of what had been issued. And it was really lacking a lot of context about the importance of the library. And it was completely absent of any inputs from the community at large. So again, I, I think this is something perhaps for our council to at least explore, perhaps get some more information from the county council or whomever. And I also am privy to that this is circulating amongst other sections of Chevy Chase Community List serves, as well as, I believe, all other councils. So I think a little fact-finding would be helpful. Thanks, over.
Can I comment on that? I think it would be useful if we could get more information and perhaps identify somebody who could perhaps come in and speak at the next meeting to say what the plans are, where it came from, where it's going, what's included in it. And that would be an opportunity to speak to everyone in the village. Now, the problem is, right now, to identify who that person is, what office is pushing it, where that should be. I'm not sure whether this is a job for Niles or council member. If you're, put on your detective shoes and start tracking down who the person is in the county. But it is, you know, something that we should be following up on. The same thing occurred with the developments at Chevy Chase Lake with the construction, prior to the construction of the Purple Line. And there was a lot of concern about that. And we did have some presentations, discussions, meetings. I went up with the manager and sat down in the office of the head of the Chevy Chase Land Company to get their views and what was happening. So this, not the first time this has happened, and I think we, it's something that we could be keeping our finger on, but we're gonna have to find out who, who the responsible parties are.
Yeah, it seems like they're actually...
I would think that maybe Niles can take the first step at it if Susan agrees, but, and then we can take it from there. We could theoretically write a letter from the council if we find the right person to express the concern from the community.
Well, I think we need more information. We don't even know if we should be concerned at the moment. Right now, it's kind of this process that Jeff describes is out there. It may turn out to be something great, but we simply don't know right now.
And maybe we can invite somebody to come talk to us, right?
But that, that would help.
Yeah, after we get some information. It's always good to have info.
So...
Niles is on it.
That's fine.
What's the next step you suggested?
Oh, Niles is gonna do his fact-finding detective thing.
Oh, okay.
I can look into it and see who in, it's probably in, in planning, just because it's, 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 I believe what was submitted, from what I understand, what was submitted was to the planning commission. So that would suspect that it would be the county planning staff that is actually on the staff side doing this. So I would, I can start there and then we can go from there, okay?
Good, good, Doug, that's a great first step, thank you. And Jeff, you had a point about a town meeting.
Correct. Just to reiterate, I think it would be nice, perhaps when, in the early fall, we could arrange for a virtual town hall with our residents. I think that would go a long way.
Again, I'll jump in, why doesn't somebody else say something here? But we, we keep looking to get residents' inputs and through a variety of different means. And just showing up at the monthly council meetings isn't always the best way. And this may, you know, this may be worth a, you know, an attempt to see if this will draw more people, get their ideas, get them talking, see what's going on. It was, it's worth, it's worth a try. Gotcha?
Yes, I was saying that it could be a nice thing to tie together with the yearly survey. We could do it either prior or following, depending on what we want the outcome to be. The town hall could feed the information that we asked for in the questions. Or we could use it to discuss the outcome of questions that we already know what we want to ask and if we want to kind of stay consistent with what we've done in prior years. So that's just something to think about. We can discuss it on email or in the next meeting.
That's good.
But it could be a nice, kind of a doubleheader way of engaging the community.
That sounds good. I think we actually are very blessed to have a lot of epidemiologists, immunologists in our, and infectious disease experts in our community. We could probably just like have a forum composed of our local experts.
Yeah.
But we could certainly, you know, go for Dr. Fauci, too. If he's available, he's looking for venues, so that could be an opportunity for him. Anybody else have thoughts or questions or things they want to explore? Topics of any, before we open it up to resident comments?
Lynn Welly is still here, must have some comments on what has happened.
Lynn, you're on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience. Trying to impose a little order on this.
Well, it's, it's better to have things in order, otherwise you leave in chaos. And we have enough of that going on outside of our community. It touches us every day.
Agreed.
So anyhow, what prompted me to participate in this tonight, I will leave till last, but it does tie into something that Ron Bolt said. But picking up where I spoke out of turn, which is the signs on property. I had been thinking about installing a sign on my property, but it's a very small one. Whenever we walk around, we see these, these little metal signs sometimes with the, with the, with the outline of a dog, and it says "no." How would that fit into this whole? I know that you're not setting policy, you're just, this is a discussion. And where I had intended to put mine is, would probably be in the, close to the property line. But I'm trying to protect a tree that I have at the corner of Quincy and Oxford, which is on private property. I have a split-leaf maple out there, and, and it's a very popular place for the dogs to stop. And I would like to have them stop doing that. But I don't want to be going through the exercise of putting up a sign if ultimately I'm gonna have to rip it back out.
So it would be within two feet of the sidewalk?
Maybe not. I think it'd be more than two feet from the sidewalk.
So Ron, that's okay, right?
Then it would be outside of the ordinance. That sign would not be prohibited, it would be a permissible sign.
It's definitely not gonna be in violation of the size requirements.
Yeah, it would be square inches as opposed to square feet.
Right.
All right, Ron, you had made a statement with regard to signs and trying to maintain an aesthetic street scape and reducing clutter. There's another thing which affects aesthetic street scape, and that is people putting their collection bins, recycle bins out like a day ahead of time, more than twenty-four hours ahead of time. They'll put them up on Mondays in the morning. And then there are other people that will, once the collection has been made, they seem to think that the curbside is a good storage place for these things. And they fail to remove them on a timely basis. And they're, and they sit there till Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And sometimes, you know, they don't bring them in until maybe Sunday night and then because they need to put something away again. And, and I would like to see, as far as aesthetics for the street scape, some communication going out to people that the curbside is not a storage place for your empty recycle bin, it should be removed on the day of collection.
I think Niles is on it. He's already writing notes to include in the weekly wrap-up.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Lynn.
I, the, the thing that prompted my signing into the meeting tonight, I had talked with about Niles. And that is where I feel that on this rather deficient performance on the bulk trash pickup this last weekend, where on some of the streets, it was not done until Tuesday, which is recycle day.
Right.
And Waste Management came through and they combined it all in one truck. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but I, I did talk about this with Niles. And I think it's an issue which needs to be discussed with Waste Management, that we were cheated. We did not get what we were paying for, even if it's a flat amount. We deserve a credit when they don't do their job. And this is a time when they failed miserably. And then they combined it all, which means that all the effort I put into yard bags, and I put a lot of effort into my yard bags, and a lot of other people do, too, it, it, it's all canceled.
So, yes, so Lynn, first of all...
I would like, if, if, I don't know if I as a, just a guy on the street in Martin's Edition has the authority, but I, if possible, I would like to read through the contract that we have with Waste Management. If, is that permitted?
Yes, so, so the contract is a public document. And I believe, Ron, if you, if you agree with me, the contract is a public document, so residents can view it.
Yes.
So yes, I can share that with you?
Would it be possible for me to come by the office and pick up a hard copy?
I can, I can make a copy available and have it outside the door for you to pick up or right in here, whichever is easiest.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll work it out on the phone and I'll come by, pick it up.
We'll make it distant, yes. I will say, so just so that there's some clarity around this, our contract does not specify necessarily that they have to pick things up in separate trucks. That is not specified in the contract. However, what it does specify is that they have to, they have to deliver them to the appropriate places that do it separately. Now, what they explained to me, which is, which is what, uh, in my conversations with Waste Management, is that when they do that, when they put things in the same truck, they take it to a different disposal place than they normally do that does separate it out at that location, okay? That was their explanation, now...
I would like, I would like to hear from Montgomery County if there is such a place that actually exists.
Right, I can, I can certainly follow up with that, but that is what they explained to me. And so I just wanted to share that with you. But I do think, in general, there are questions about the bulk collection that both I had and Waste Management had, and I think that is a continuing conversation that needs to take place. Because I am disappointed with how this happened, both in terms of the communication from them. So for example, they did not communicate on Saturday until four PM with me about what was, what was happening. And so I will just say that, that, that I, I understand and, and share your concern.
You mean, what you just said, remind me of something. They're letting you know at four PM. It seems that in the past, when, when they were late in, as far as being behind what would be their normal schedule as to when they do the collection for the household trash or the recycle, that when they fail to make that normal schedule, the office, you or whoever's been the manager in the past, doesn't get word of this until late in the afternoon, and then the word goes out to the community. And it would seem to me that Waste Management would know early in the day or, or sometime during the day that they have a problem and that they need to communicate that to us.
And, and that is something that I'm gonna talk to them about specifically because all of the numbers that I have and tried to communicate with did not answer. I had, I left voicemails and voicemails and emails. So, and even their office number was closed. So one of the things I want to talk to them is, is, do they have a weekend dispatcher, that kind of thing? And that's another contract-related thing where I believe it says that there should be somebody available for these weekend collections, but that's another fine detail that I want to look at and something we need to look at going forward, okay?
Very well, well, you can send me an email when you have the hard copy available. I'll come by, pick it up.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's in my agenda.
All right.
Thank you for letting me take your time.
Thank you, Lynn. And, and if it's any consolation, I think eighty percent of the council members were also inconvenienced by that missed pickup, so...
And we're all calling Niles on Saturday to let him know the state of things.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other resident comments?
Yes, I, I do. Hi, it's Paula Goldberg from Bradley Lane, outgoing tree supervisor. We haven't gotten any rain for several days, and I just wanted to remind residents to water right-of-way trees if it's possible, especially the younger trees that have a three-inch diameter. They are the one, they are the, you know, the plants, the trees that are most stressed during these periods of, of near drought. I also wanted to thank Paul Wolf. Although I know he's a contractor for the Village, he's just been a delight to work with. And I also wanted to make myself available as a resource for Monty as he moves into the position of tree supervisor.
Thank you, Paula.
And Paula, I, a personal and as well as a communal thing... And I, Paula, I, a personal and as well as a communal thank you for your work in the last few years.
Thank you, it's.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, everybody.
Hey, it's Keith.
Uh, this, this is Keith, the weatherman. Paula just gave you some very good advice for the citizens to keep the trees watered with a monumental heat wave that will be enveloping our community for the foreseeable future. The temperatures by the end of the weekend and early next week, up around one hundred degrees. I'd also like to, um, welcome Jeff to the council. We're very fortunate to have him. I wanna say hello to Arthur, to Susan, to Katja, to everybody. And to, we're gonna miss Tiffany. I'm gonna miss Tiffany. Uh, take care, everybody, and stay cool from Keith the Weatherman. I picked those up and took care of business.
Thank you very much.
And this is David wants to say hello too.
From the Golden Gate Bridge, right.
Nice. Take care. Okay, do we have other comments?
Yes, this is Marty Langland. Thank you all, and again, welcome to Jeff, to the council. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, um, couple points. Um, on the twenty-ninth, you and I gave the council, um, the report that Arthur had requested last month at the council meeting, which had a number of action items in it, particularly about, um, strengthening the electoral firewall between the election committee and the council and staff to clarify some issues that came up in this year's election. And again, um, after five years on the election committee and having written the election ordinance and many of the changes since then, um, I do want to really underscore the importance of that electoral firewall, that we really do need to protect the, um, fair and independent elections to make sure that we have the procedural safeguards in place to ensure the independence of the election process from any potential conflicts of interest. So I'm going to really urge the council and, and the future election committee to follow up on those recommendations and really think that very seriously. Um, because it is, um, an ethical and a legal issue. And again, I thank you for, for Arthur for asking for it, and, um, glad to provide it, and I hope we'll follow up on it. And Niles, I know you're following up with the performance problems we had with Aglectic, the contractors, and thank you for that. Um, I'd also like to make a general point, which is that, um, we've got a real transition going on here. We're, we've lost a lot of very experienced volunteers after this year. Um, you know, Paula, of course, with the tree expertise, I mean, I think she knows, like Paul Wolf, every tree in the right-of-way of the entire village. And we had a lot of, uh, expertise on the election committee after five years of my service and four years, three years with, with various other members. So I, I also will be looking forward to working with the new election committee. And my question for the council is, have you or do you plan to share that June twenty-ninth memo that I prepared in response to Arthur's request with the new election committee? Have you given them that memo, or do you plan to give them that memo?
Uh, the new committee has not convened. They've, they've actually just been constituted, so.
Will you be giving them that menu, that, uh, memo to follow up on?
I don't know. I mean, I, I haven't actually seen it, so, um, I'm not really sure.
This is the memo I sent you on June twenty-nine.
Okay, sure.
In response to Arthur's specific request at the last council meeting.
Okay, yeah. Yes, 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 it will definitely be shared with the current, um, election committee. And we appreciate your service, and especially, um, are grateful for your willingness to work with the future committee.
Yes, there, there is a lot of expertise involved in, in running a village election, clearly and honestly, and with no bias. And, uh, you know, my integrity has been, I think, a, a key part in making this election committee work so well for, um, well, since two thousand fifteen, since we first wrote the ordinance. And, uh, I think the village should be very proud of the fact we've had very clean elections. And the electoral firewall does need to be strengthened after what happened this year. So I thank the council for taking that very seriously.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
Lynn Welly here.
Hey Lynn.
Just, uh, has, uh, has the new officer slate been selected within the council, the positions?
Yes, tonight. You just, you just missed it, yeah.
Yeah. Are you the new, you're the new chairman?
I am.
Congratulations.
Reluctantly, yes.
And welcome, and welcome to Mr. Blander.
Yes.
I look forward to, uh, all your good work, and I thank you in advance for all of it and the time that you put in. Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing, picking up on Jeff Blander's suggestion about a town hall. Right now, the, the most, uh, broad scope of resident input is the, um, the list of questions that comes in every year for the community forum for the candidates. Uh, we had like three pages, single-spaced this year, quite a lengthy list. I think Katja and Todd, I know, have both seen that, that list of questions that came in this year.
Well, actually, Marty, I think that the most comments we get back from the residents on a yearly basis is, um, we gave them a survey.
I'm a survey, that's good, that's good. Um, but, you know, that, that, that list of questions that came in for this year's forum was very broad. Um, and a lot of residents participated this year. And, um, there were a lot of questions, for example, about staffing issues. There were a lot of questions about five G networks. There was a really interesting question, um, for the forum about, um, having someone, a contractor, handle a village listserv, so it wasn't privately operated anymore, but, but was more accessible as a village communication device. And there were a lot of questions about the, uh, sort of green committee that Susan, I think you were talking about at the forum. Um, and, uh, these are the kinds of issues that, that come up. And I would be happy to give the entire council that list of questions. I know Todd and Katja already have them. Todd and Katja, do you wanna just share that list of questions with your council colleagues? Because these are issues that, that come from the community, and, you know, people think they're important enough to ask at the forum, so they all go on the forum list. They don't really have time to ask them all at the forum. I mean, I thought Haley did a great job as the moderator, but there's never time to ask all the questions. Um, so I guess my question for Katja and Todd is, would you circulate that list of forum questions to your colleagues on the council and address those issues in future council actions?
You.
Yes, sure, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Katja. Send it to everybody.
Alright.
Again, the five G questions I thought were very interesting, and, and some of them far too technical for me to understand, but kind of thing that, that certainly seems to be a community issue.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
Wonderful, and this is Jeff here. I just wanna give a shout-out with that list of things, that, uh, there was that wonderful suggestion of COVID victory gardens, which I haven't forgotten about, so we'll have to see how that fits in as well, right, Paul?
You're gonna have to annex some of that right away.
Um, Alyssa Bean here, Turner Lane.
Hi, Alyssa.
Let's all have a little time for another resident comment.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to circle back to the, um, the sign ordinance that you discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I, I just wanted to just sort of express my opinion about this, and just to let you know that I, I have some concerns about this, and I, I definitely, um, appreciate what Arthur shared and, and absolutely, um, sort of feel, um, the same concerns that he has in terms of, um, you know, are we starting to regulate, um, you know, freedom of speech? I also sort of am wondering where this is, um, coming from, why it's coming up now, and whether this is a, a necessary regulation to put into place at this point. I also frankly can't help but wonder, um, why this is coming up now, and it, and it makes me suspect that this is coming from some possibly, um, I'm sorry, a little background noise with my kids and husband. Um, just sort of the, I wonder if there's an overlap here with so many, um, strong feelings about Black Lives Matters and how a lot of signs are, um, coming up in people's yards in, in the right-of-way. I know there have been some young people who have posted Black Lives Matters signs all along Brookfield Road that I've noticed. Um, I saw like new signs posted on Brookfield, went away for just a few days, and I noticed when we came home, um, that all of them had been ripped down. And I'm seeing, you know, obviously that's a, politics is, can be divisive, but I just, I just can't help but wonder why now, why, where this is coming from, and also whether this is just necessary. I mean, how many sixteen-foot signs are we seeing in people's yards right now? And, and also, you know, I just wonder if this is putting a regulation on us that's just unnecessary. What about bake sale signs? What about lemonade stands? Um, why can't somebody put a sign in the right-of-way that they're maintaining , um, because they have a problem with people, you know, leaving their dogs, you know, dog feces there? So these are, these are some things I definitely have some strong feelings about, and I just wanted to express that and share my appreciation for Arthur pointing this out. I just feel like be careful before we just sort of implement something like this without really thinking through the ramifications. Um, and that, that's all I have to say. And thank you for listening.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, Alyssa. I think, um, clearly, Arthur, um, Lynn's dog sign would not be impacted. Lemonade signs would not be impacted. I understand your concern, but I think, um, it's just really been obvious um, as more signs have appeared that have kind of provided clutter on some of the street signs that, um, we don't currently have a regulation to control that, to, um, to really exercise control over the right-of-way in a way that, um, does make our community safer from sign clutter. I mean, if you've attended a Joe Cutro, um, meeting, you know how opposed he is to sign clutter. Um, that's just, that was, I think, the compelling reason for now, just putting it in the time context.
And it's also a long-term thing, right? This is not necessarily to address anything that is going on currently.
Right.
We're trying to be consistent and fair, um, no matter what comes up. Um, so you really shouldn't be thinking of that as, just because it came up now, that it's targeting any specific kind of an action.
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, signs in the right-of-way, I can understand, um, you know, the VMA wanting to have official regulation over that and, and be sort of, in terms of people posting signs in their own yards, expressing their own feelings about current political events, affairs, I just, I feel, I feel like we're getting into a little bit of censorship that, um, isn't, um, really what we're about. Um, so, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Right. I, I think that is not the intent, and we will certainly be discussing it further. Um, and, um, we'll certainly welcome additional comments from you and from anyone else. But, um, but I, I think that, I mean, I, I generally understand your concerns. Um, and we'll be discussing at the next meeting. So, do we have other comments?
Lynn Welly here.
Hey Lynn.
Uh, back to the collection bins.
Right.
They're, they're, this ties into walkability. Uh, I know the primary thing with walkability is to improve the walkability in areas where it's difficult to walk. But there are areas which have pre-existing current sidewalks. And the collection bins are at times placed on those sidewalks by the residents. The, from what I understand, the collection crew people are told to replace the bins where they find them. So the, one, the residents need to know that they shouldn't put them on the sidewalks. Uh, and then of course, uh, the collection people should know that regardless of where they find them, they should be put on the, you know, on the grass between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah, in the right-of-way.
Um, the, with this COVID nineteen thing going on, there's a tremendous increase in pedestrian traffic. There's a pedestrian increase, you know, with the adults at home with their children, so they're outdoors more. And, and these sidewalks need to be cleared. So that, and then another thing on, on blocking of sidewalks are vehicles that park across the sidewalk right-of-way. That is, I think, a big no-no, and all the residents should know that whether it's, it's a company. So, a contractor coming to visit, a service vendor, or, or a personal company, that, that a vehicle blocking the pedestrian right-of-way on the sidewalk is a big no-no. You know, there is, there's a county ordinance on that, and, and the village has adopted a light ordinance. And, and if something can go out on that, uh, for people to read.
Certainly, I mean, in, in the wrap-up, we've, I've included language on that, but I can make it more clear, so.
And also with regard to the.
Yes, in regard to the bins as well. Both, I think both things just can be more clear, but, thank you.
No, just, as time goes by, these, the list of things that block the sidewalk keep creeping up in my mind, and so the, the list gets expanded. That's all, that's all.
Certainly, no, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not.
Hang on.
One? Oh, Tiffany.
I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations, new council. Excited to be, uh, volunteering as a appointed committee member, and, um, look forward to whatever the outreach or next steps are, so that, you know, there was a discussion about committee trainings, um, about the Public Meetings Act and that kind of stuff. So, whenever you guys are ready, we'll be around.
Thank you. Thanks for.
I second that. Thank you all, the outgoing committee members, um, council members, Tiffany, and welcome Jeff. And, um, also, I feel, you know, immensely grateful to Marty for all of the work she's done over the years for our community with the elections committee. I know how much effort and time she's put in, and I think, um, she's been an unsung hero for a long time, so just wanted to recognize her.
Thank you, Alyssa. That's very nice of you.
Totally.
Okay, thanks. So, if we have no further comments from residents or anyone else, the council will entertain a motion, an open session, to enter into a closed session in accordance with section three dash three oh five B one of the Open Meetings Act, Maryland Code General Provisions Article, to discuss personnel matters that affect one or more specific appointees, and with section three dash three oh five B seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice regarding the twenty-twenty election. So, would anyone like to make said motion?
I will move to, to depart open session and enter closed session.
Or how about depart open session and enter closed session?
You say it.
Yeah, we got the intent.
Yes.
Okay.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned. All right, we're entering closed session.
Yep.
The closed session.